We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, if anybody wants to participate on Zoom, you can look at the town agenda and get all the Zoom information you need. All right, with that being done, election of the chair.
I nominate Kevin.
I'll second it. Thanks.
All in favor? Adopt him to the agenda. We have one omission. Article nine on the update of Federal Emergency Management Agency.
Yes, our fire administrator and emergency management agent, Mike Drake, was going to provide an update, and he's unable to make the meeting tonight, so we'd like to reschedule that, probably two weeks out.
Public comment? No. Select Board announcements? I'll start, if you want to finish eating.
No, I can go.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm new to the Select Board. I'd like to thank the town for electing me there last Saturday, or two Saturdays ago. Now it's kind of all a blur. Immaculate. I live in County Harbor, and if you guys ever need to get in touch with me, I think it's pretty easy at this point. The only other thing I wanted to add is I met with the Harpswell Land Trust yesterday, and they're interested in meeting with the board to kind of discuss some different stuff in terms of working waterfront, affordable housing, and stuff like that. It was a pretty receptive conversation, and I think maybe we could try to find some time to meet with them.
Anytime.
And Matt, I want to welcome you aboard, and I look forward to working with you as long as you always agree with me.
I will, as long as you never agree with Dave.
Now we're going to dilemma.
There you go. All right, Town Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also, on behalf of the staff, want to welcome Matt Gilli, our newest Select Board member, and just want him to know that the staff is available to assist you as a member of the board. And any information that you need along the way, any issues you want on the agenda, just let us know how we can help you be successful and accomplish the things that you want to accomplish while you're in office.
You guys have been excellent so far, so.
Thank you. I do want to, on the agenda, we have a coastal bluff grant that has been offered to the town. It's come to our attention through the Cumberland County Soil and Water District. It involves the bluff at Mitchell Field, which has previously been studied and was now eligible to be selected for this latest grant, which is, I believe, it's a National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant. It's one of three projects that's been selected. There's no cash match required by the town. There's only some staff time. It's very limited. I spoke with our town planner, Margaret McIntyre, and she's very interested in being the town's contact person for this grant situation. She feels like it's a learning experience and that she'd be willing to take part in this on behalf of the town. So, again, I don't think you need to vote on anything, but I think we just want the board to be aware of this and to let us know if there's some reason you would not want the town to participate.
Well, it looks like at some point we'd have to approve staff participation, but that's not.
Well, I think that would be tonight. If you have any objection, let us know, because there is a minimal amount.
Why would I have objection?
Okay, all right, yeah. But tonight is really asking you to accept the staff participating in this project, and it will be minimal.
Okay, you have my nod.
Okay, is that fine? What's that?
You just wait. You just wait.
Okay. And the other item I have, we added it to the agenda. We have received a resignation from Tori Baron. She is our part-time assessing assistant. She has been offered a job in a nearby community. It's a full-time job in the same line of work that she's been doing for the town of Harpswell. So, we're pleased for her.
So, she's going off well-trained.
But it's going to be another vacancy that we have to consider filling. So, I would ask the board to vote on accepting Tori Baron's resignation. It's effective as of March 19th.
I move we accept it with regret.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? I don't see any. All in favor?
Thank you. That concludes my report tonight.
All right, Consent Agenda.
I will move the consent agenda, which is the treasurer's reimbursement warrants for payroll and state fees, the committee resignation, road name, a state registrant agent form, settlement, recommitment of property taxes, and authorization of the warrants, which I want to say HNP is on this warrant, and I'm the president of HNP, so I just want to say that.
No, good.
I need a second. We need a second.
I'll second it again.
Any discussion? I don't see any. All in favor? All right. Grant application for kites over New England.
So, this is a great idea that's coming from our recreation director. It's a grant program that would involve getting funds whereby the town's recreation department would work with the local school community to build kites and to eventually have a kite-flying event at Mitchell Field. So, we think it's a wonderful idea, and we would ask the board to support the submission of this grant application.
So moved.
I second it.
Discussion, none? All in favor?
Thank you.
No, that was easy. All right.
Told you I never would have.
We haven't got there yet. Shampoo Family Realty LLC Warp Application, map 45, lot 95, 31 Gus Kelly Road.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Tim Forster with Flycatcher here on behalf of the applicants. This is essentially a replacement structure of the existing dock. So, you can probably see in the photographs. It's a slightly older pier. The intent of replacing this is to elevate the end of it. The original one sort of sloped its way down, coming down the hill, so it had a little bit of issue on some of the extreme tides, and portions of the pier were underwater. So, we're just raising up its elevation overall. And then, really, the change, why we're here before you today, is that the float itself will turn 90 degrees. That'll allow them to store a boat on either side of the float. That'll also provide a little bit of separation from the adjacent dock. There was a site visit with the code officer and our staff, and I don't believe there's been any objection to the project.
Seems fairly simple on all sides.
I approved it when I was on the Harbor and Waterfront Committee, so I can approve it again.
Still feel that way.
Yeah, mine hasn't changed.
All right. I move to approve the application as the harbor master indicates there's no hesitation to navigation, no injury to the rights of others in relation to fishing, following, or navigating.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion.
I was a Timmerman.
I made the motion.
Thank you very much.
All right. That's it, Tim. Update? Oh, we don't have that one. Next step, scheduling town meeting.
Yes, so Saturday was a very unique situation for the town. We reached, or we were soon to reach capacity at the Harpswell Islands, I call it, Harpswell Community School. That dates me, because it used to be the Harpswell Island School. So, we reached the capacity limit, which was 420. We were very close, and it was going to happen. We, in essence, got legal advice from Maine Municipal Association that the meeting was canceled. The business meeting part was canceled, and that because the election of officers occurred, we also had another secret ballot item, Curtis Library. That essentially was our annual town meeting for the purposes of primarily the election of a new Select Board member, school board member, town clerk, and tax collector. However, we did not get to budget items, and so there is this sense of urgency to deal with that issue. And so, the staff has been looking at options. One of the options is that the Orion Performing Arts Center in Topsom is available on Saturday, April 5th. It's not available on the 22nd. It's not available on the 29th of March, but it is available April 5th. We were also advised by Maine Municipal Association that while we could have a meeting on April 5th, we really need sort of this stopgap measure to authorize funding. Because we didn't have our town meeting on the 8th, we had an article that was going to authorize spending from January 1st to the annual town meeting on the 8th. But we didn't get through that warrant. We didn't get authorization from the voters. So, we're kind of in this odd situation where our fiscal year is January to December, and the article that we anticipated to cover our expenditures from January 1 to the annual town meeting, it didn't get to the voters. So, we were provided with an article that the Select Board should consider calling a special town meeting for as soon as possible, which would really be next Saturday. You have to have a warrant posted for seven days in the town of Harpswell that tells voters what you're expecting them to vote on. As we discussed this issue of having to have something more immediately on March 22nd, there was some internal conversation about, well, the board now is free to put whatever articles it wants on a March 22nd warrant. You could put some items that you may want to go to secret ballot on a secret ballot vote in June or November, if you wanted to stick with typical secret ballot dates that we have for voting. So, there's a lot of different options for the board to consider. I think there was a suggestion that if the board pulled off some of the more controversial issues, that maybe we could have a town meeting at Harpswell Community School to deal with the budget items. But again, these are all issues you really have to discuss and provide the staff with guidance going forward. But there is this immediacy to the article that would authorize spending from January 1st until our next town meeting that authorizes the budget, the 2025 budget. That has not happened yet.
Well, to back into it a little bit, if we can decide to take the three contentious articles and at least two of them, get them on the June ballot. I've been talking to some of the stakeholders on the comprehensive plan, you know, the ones that are in opposition. And I talked to Al LaGrole about it today a little bit, about kicking that so we can keep working on it till November, the comp plan. That way.
I had the same conversation with him too, right before this meeting.
We didn't have it together.
No, we did not. They were separate.
Yeah, but I've met with a couple of people in the last couple of days who are, you know, stakeholders, and one of them deals with short-term rentals. It's about the housing.
I know. I know what it is.
So, but I would like to see the fire station and the Mitchell Field, a ballot item in June. June 8th, is it? 10th?
June 10th, I believe.
Yeah, 10th. Because if we do that, that way there, we have the room at Harpswell Community School to have the whole warrant and get that out of the way on the 22nd.
Yeah.
Yeah, get everything else that we had on the warrant, but those three things for the 22nd, then you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, perfect.
So, if I get my way, it'll be the fire station and the Mitchell Field building, and then shoot the comp plan out to November so we can get everybody on board. I don't know if it's going to pass or fail. I get the feeling it's probably going to fail, and I'd just soon not do it twice. We've been at it.
And I don't think, if we put it on the June 10th one in order, correct me, Kristy, if I'm wrong, we'd have to basically have the final draft ready to go on the ballot by the,
Well, April 10th.
Yeah, right, right.
So, that gives us really, what, three weeks?
No, we don't have time.
Yeah, we don't have time. So, unfortunately, we would have to push that one to November just because there's not the time to make the changes that need to be made. I don't think it'll hold the hearing. But I think everything else, I agree with you, with if you pulled those three things off, I don't see why we couldn't take every other warrant item, because they're all pretty straightforward.
Yep. And well, as long as we're on the conversation, I think town meetings from now on should be held in Topsom. I've heard more comments about the older people trying to get to the falls, you know, park at the bottom of the hill. You know, there was a lot of that conversation going on the other day.
I just wonder if the older people can make the trek to Topsom, you know, if we disenfranchise anyone by moving in and out of town. You know, but we're, I guess, thinking about it. They have so much notice. You know, I mean, I think that's half the reason we saw so many people, because everybody knew for months that town meeting was on, you know, so they could arrange to get up there if they wanted to, I'm sure.
We always hope for a good turnout.
Yeah, we got it.
But if we just do the warrants on the 22nd.
I told myself they came out because they wanted to color my box in. That was just me.
I want to remind everyone that this comprehensive plan was three years in the making, a lot of expense, a lot of time went into it, a lot of research, and there's four paragraphs in here that people object to.
I think there's more than four, based on the people I talked to.
But it doesn't put it into law. All it does, it's a suggestion.
I know, but you know that, I know that. But in order to get it passed, we're going to have to do some changes. Alan agreed. We'll get the comprehensive plan ready together to discuss it all.
We'll go to four years making this, okay?
Well, you know, we've gone this long. I don't want to do it twice.
Right, I'd rather get it right the first time. Even if it takes four years. I mean, good things come to those who wait, right?
Well, not always, but no.
I guess so. Good things come to those who flounder.
So. So, my motion is if we put the two items, the fire station and Mitchell Field, the ballot for June 10th, that way we can have our business meeting the 22nd of March.
And do everything else.
Yep, do everything else. And then, well, and this is time for the Mitchell Field Committee to, you know, if they want to have, you know, kind of like the fire department did. They had a public thing to explain what they're doing, and the Mitchell Field Committee can do the same thing.
Well, did you want to speak on this subject?
I'll speak on two subjects, if I'm allowed.
It's up to the chair.
One is the housing. I am on the committee. Now, I'm standing here without committee approval, but the committee has pretty much had a consensus that we didn't write the Section 4 of the Housing Comp Plan and that we would like to officially have amended that at that meeting, but we were told we were not allowed to. So, I am officially telling you that we, the Housing Committee, intend to ask for that to be extracted. Because we had nothing to do with short-term rentals.
I've told everybody that.
We actually excluded that within our Affordable Housing Working Group statement because it was contentious and it was unfitting for us to be discussing it. And so, unfortunately, there was a draft that we reported to Comp, but they had already done some paperwork, and this was something that was missed by a lot of people. But it was not the intent to put anything in there. We have a very, very short little snippet within the Affordable Housing Working Group draft that was approved by Select Board that says if you put up a second I D U on your property, that that should be an attainable housing. That's it.
This is probably not the time to talk about that, though.
Okay, I'm just trying to, so that's my Housing Committee. Now, the other is that because the meeting's open to possibly rejiggering warrants, I would like to talk to, about amending warrant article number 30 to read to see if the town will vote for appropriate, approximately up to 150 for the unassigned funds balance for the Mitchell Field Administration Building, including the removal of hazardous materials, and further to authorize the Select Board to accept and expand any grant funds to this purpose. We believe this, we believe that this amended article would better represent the performance expressed by more than half of the town residents who participated in the survey or workshop conducted by the Midcoast Council of Governors at request of the Select Board and the findings and recommendations of the MCOG report submitted to the Select Board March 18th to 2024. I will give you these copies.
Thank you.
Eventually. Do you need it to speak to it? Okay. Are you recommending this if it is going to secret ballot? You're recommending this?
I would recommend this amendment. And let me give you the reasons why. It may not be clear why, but the Recreation Center Committee submitted to the Select Board a draft of how the Administration Building could be reused. And that is per the guidance of the MCOG report that said submit this, an idea that could be fostered and be sustained. That was done. Then it goes to say that once the Select Board accepts that, you're allowed to go to lease negotiation and a one-year term limit to then raise funds to be able to do that. Let me give you some background and why I'm representing that 150,000, not the $230,000 warrant that is requesting demolition within that remediation warrant should be excluded. First of all, this amended saves the town $80,000 at a minimum. It also, if you understand and read the MCOG report, it stated that the demolition number alone was 200,000. Kevin has spoken that there's an estimate out on the street that's been obtained by the town of approximately 200,000 to take the building down. So, there's two references to demolition of 200, but yet the environmental report only states 100. So, you could be liable for another 100,000 on top of the 230 warrant. It's just got to be understood that we could be getting ourselves into a problem when there's two people that have given us quotes. Second of all, third, over 300 people voiced their opinion that they'd like to see the Administration Building saved. Let's represent what the MCOG report did. It asked us, the town, what we should think about the Administration Building. Half said yes, let's do something. Fourth, you can't demo the building until the remediation is complete by D E P standards, law. So, because there's 50 milligrams, parts per million of PCBs in the two windows and one door, you have to remediate before a demolition is allowed. So, why not give it time to do the remediation and then follow through to a demolition? And if that means a warrant next year or that really there's a purpose to save the building? Fifth, the recommend, and I'm sorry that this one teased me up more than anything, but fifth is the recommendation that the environmental consultant is valid. And I say this because I called John Cressy, the owner of Beacon Environmental, directly because I felt there was something unjust in the report's recommendation of why we went to $230,000 of expenditure, and demolition was the recommendation. And I said, John, if you're doing the remediation at 150, and you know there's three, two windows and one door that are being affected, the repair of that after the remediation of the PCBs would probably be about $2,000 per opening. He said yes. I said, so how did we get to a recommendation A3 of 230? And his quote was, "I was told." Again, I will tell you that again. He was told to put that in as a recommendation. I did not ask any more questions at that point in time because I think it was unfair, but there's only a select amount of people that could have been involved to have been, for the consultant to take that and then make a recommendation.
Mr. Chair, could I really ask that we invite Mr. Cressy to a meeting? Because I really feel like Mr. Cressy should speak for himself. I've never heard this issue that he was told to come up with this number. I spoke with him recently, and he said that Select Board member Chipman called him and questioned his numbers. He told me that he stood by his numbers, that he had a figure from a contractor that demolition would be 80 to $100,000, which is different from some other figure that the town may have had earlier. But I really don't think it's fair to challenge his statement without him being here. He wrote that report.
I'm not challenging his statement, not at all. You expressed to me, Kristy, that the original environmental report was requested because the generator building wanted to be used for storage. So, how did we get all the way to a demolition of the Administration? And so, that's, I've just been asking myself lots of questions because I've been through these reports for many years, 40 years, and the logic just didn't make sense when you could spend approximately $6,000 more to repair the windows and the two, and door, and we've jumped from 156 possibly as a whole in cost to save, to have the building sit there, and we jumped to 230. It was a logical question.
I think he should come and explain it. It's in a written report that he has stamped as a professional. It was paid for by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection. It was recommended to the town by Midcoast Council of Governments that we could get this grant money to have all of these buildings assessed for hazardous materials. And we were, it was part of the information gathering process, and nobody from the town was directing a specific outcome. If that's what you're implying, I would really seriously question where that statement came from. But anyway, I think tonight you don't have to make any decision because if you're going to put it on a June ballot, you have time. This is a substantive change that's being proposed because they're basically saying remove the demolition option. So, I think the Mitchell Field Committee should have an opportunity to weigh in before the board makes any kind of final decision about what's going to be on a ballot in June.
And talk to Cressy, and maybe on the 27th.
I have to say, my memory's not what it used to be, but I don't recall speaking to him.
Really?
I didn't speak to him. I didn't think it was appropriate.
I thought he said, maybe it was Bob, and he thought Bob was a Select Board member because he said to me, that's really interesting you're calling me because I thought I just spoke to a Select Board member, but it must have been you as a citizen of the town who reached out. So, I thought it was David, and my apologies.
This is, this is Bob.
I thought I was losing.
Reading the report, trying to figure out.
He said he got this call, and he was being challenged, and somebody was questioning him.
No, I did not challenge him at all.
Questioning his figures, he said.
That's all, that, I was.
All right.
So, that's not a challenge? That's a question?
I have a question. I agree with everything you've said. My only question is, being new, after Mitchell Field gets a chance to review this, will we get a chance to hear from the Mitchell Field Committee on what they think?
I think it should be put on the agenda in two weeks and for further discussion.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
If you're agreeing, if you're agreeing to pull it from the March 22nd warrant, then you're talking about putting it in front of the voters for June 10th, but you're being presented with a different warrant article than what you had in the March 8th warrant. And I don't think the Mitchell Field Committee, obviously, it just got presented tonight, so they would not have any idea that this is being requested.
Yeah, me too.
I'm not, I'm not in a rush to demolish the building. I mean, there are steps that have to be taken before it can be demolished anyway.
And this is going to be on the ballot in June, so we have time. And I don't know if we need Mr. Cressy here, but he can.
Well, if somebody's suggesting that somehow these, his numbers aren't accurate, I think he ought to be able to speak to those numbers.
Maybe we can just have him call in even.
He can zoom in. I'll be zooming in on the 27th.
Zoom party.
I thank you for your time.
Then the regalia's run. All right, so where were we?
We're still turning aside.
Evening.
What do you want?
So cordial.
All I'm asking is will the June ballot voting be taking place at the community school as usual?
Probably, yes, most likely.
Yeah, it's outside the budget.
So, people will have an opportunity to vote on the central station article. It will occur at, in Harpswell as opposed to, they won't be going out of town. They'll be voting in Harpswell.
Right, and if we move it to the secret ballot, obviously, it needs a public hearing first.
I understand. I just think it's important for people to understand I just think it's important for people to understand that it's coming up for a secret ballot, it's going to occur in Harpswell. And that means there will be, as you point out, Dave, a public hearing 60 days prior to the secret ballot. Will there also be absentee ballots?
Yes.
And when will the absentee ballot, how many days?
30 days before the vote.
So people that may not be able to attend to the Harpswell Community School will be able to stop by here and vote as well. I just wanted that information also, people, for clarity, so people would know they had opportunities to do that and not necessarily had to be at the community school. Thank you.
So, back to my original motion.
Hold on a second. Okay, do you want to?
I just wanted, as a point of clarification, to hear your original motion because we've gone back and, maybe I'm just confused, I'm trying to figure out if there's going to be three things on the secret ballot or two.
Only, only two things pertinent to the town. The third thing will be the budget of SCD 75. Is that right?
Yeah, the school budget vote will happen on June 10, but the municipal ballot will have most likely the administration building. And you're saying the other item would be the, the fire station, the bond, the bond.
Okay. So it's going to be the fire station, the admin building, and the school budget. And everything else on the warrant is going to be discussed?
On the 22nd.
Well, the comp plan will be.
Except for comp plan.
It looks like the comp plan's moved to November.
Oh, okay. That's what I was wondering about.
No, that's good.
That kind of disappears.
I was getting, I might have already said it. I remember now.
Okay.
Ten minutes ago.
Thank you. And so in two weeks, there'll be a discussion, maybe a workshop with the Mitchell Field Committee to go over the admin building?
It's up to how the board would like to proceed. I think a public discussion is fine. You're talking about a warrant article. I don't know.
So we put it on our next agenda in two weeks.
Two weeks. Okay with that.
Yeah, fine. It's fine with me.
Excellent. Thank you.
In the meantime, your motion, if you.
Let me give it another shot. Yep, on the, we take the fire station and the administration building for June 10, a ballot item. And for town, and the comp plan for the November vote. And we'll have time to work out details in order to get that passed.
And everything else?
And all the warrants on the 22nd of March.
I will second that.
Oh, plus that additional language that would authorize spending from January 1st.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that's included in the warrant anyway, they just revised.
Right.
You seconded it. I don't have any discussion.
Now you're all set. Any more discussion on this? Nope, all in favor?
Okay, and I do just want to check with our newest select board member. Do you recommend the articles that are in the warrant?
Oh, now I gotta do that. Actually, I was flipping through and trying to X ones that we should move. And the only one that I noticed, hang on, let me just find it just a second, there was only one that I would change.
Would that be the radish sheet, saying that he's, if you're not in favor of it?
We wouldn't have on a radish sheet now if we.
Well, he's wondering if what Matt's looking at maybe was corrected on radish sheet.
Oh, I see, okay.
It was the funding for NEFSA.
Oh, do you want to move that?
I would vote in favor of that.
Oh, okay, support that. Okay, got it.
So it'd be unanimous support from the select board.
Recommended by the select board.
Yeah.
Whatever.
That would be the only change. Everything else I would go along with.
All right.
Can we just point out one other signature to review?
One, oh, and there was one other.
That's just for the warrant items on the 22nd you're asking about.
Right, right, yeah. The ban stand committee asked for one very minor change.
Oh, yeah.
And that, that was in the, the Mitchell Field article, and it used to say ban stand maintenance, and they would like it to just be ban stand. They'd like the opportunity to use some of that funding for advertising.
I move that.
Okay. So we would just, it was previously Article 29, and it said ban stand maintenance, and we're just going to remove the word maintenance so that money, that $3,000 could be used for ban stand related expenses.
Move and second it.
Second it. All in favor?
And the only other little tweak, when the attorney gave us that new article to authorize the spending from January 1, it said until the conclusion of the next town meeting, we're just going to remove the word next, and it will say until the conclusion of the town meeting at which the 2025 budget is approved and to ratify prior spending of such amount. So that was just a minor change to make sure it was clear to the voter what we were talking about. And we will make that change about NEFSA, make sure that's a recommendation from all select board members. We did a slight change to, because we don't want to find ourselves in the same situation that we found ourselves in when our meeting had to be canceled, we have this, I forgot to bring this to your attention, but the article that we used previously always said from January 1 to our annual town meeting. But we've been advised to change that to say from January 1 until the town meeting at which that budget is approved. So you're, you're okay with that? Because again, we had to cancel the meeting and it sort of didn't give us the authorization for spending that we would like to see. So I think this will clean it up for the future. So I'm sorry I didn't bring those to your attention before you vote, but I hope they can be incorporated and/or you could suggest that you accept those changes, those minor changes. Thank you.
We have to second or vote on anything?
Do you want the minor, yeah, why don't you sort of vote to accept those minor changes?
I'll move.
I second it. Any discussion on those? Nope, all in favor?
Okay, thank you.
The staff would like to offer if, you know, so your large town meeting book there, all your article numbers will change. If you'd like staff to change those for you, we'd be happy to do that. Or if you'd like to just get, I see a yes, okay.
Oh, here you go.
I'll keep mine, I can just follow along accordingly, like it's the same information.
We'll fix it so you're not confused.
It will make it more exciting for me.
You're going to say previously article this, but now article this.
I'll drop mine off.
Mavi, I'll learn the hard way.
I usually just use the town report.
That's what I do too. I brought mine today.
Yeah, mine's in my drawer. All right.
Oh, we'll make changes, if, at the end of the meeting, if you can just stick around for about five or 10 minutes, we'll have that ready, you sign it, and then the clerk's office will post the warrant, and the staff is going to try to get postcards out to all our residents advising them of the meeting and what's on it and what's not on it. So that's the plan.
Yeah, that'll be a good one. All right, Select Board Committee liaisons and copper volunteers.
I have to tell you, I'm pretty happy with the ones that I have.
I don't have any.
I know. You will. I would just as soon take cable that Jane had and.
You don't think that's a conflict since you're the president of HDC?
Why would I, why would it be a conflict?
Because I thought that issue would come up before.
I think that presents a conflict myself.
I don't think so.
Good, you can have it.
I want it, but I'll take it if I get to.
I'll give you a couple nice ones.
I will say that the cable committee really is not meeting at the moment because everything is in the hands of our attorney.
That's why I want it. No, I mean, I, I'm certainly very well-versed on cable issues, and it would make, it would make sense if I was involved in it. I don't see a conflict, I really don't. I mean, I'm the president of, of community broadcasting, but.
I'm going to let your colleagues weigh in on that. Because I thought previously this came up and.
For years, I was the president, I was the chairman of the cable advisory committee, and then when I became president of the, when we formed the nonprofit, I continued to be very much involved in the cable committee. I don't see a conflict in that, if you guys do, I, you know.
I can see whether it could be the potential for conflict.
I'm, we'll keep an eye on it.
I mean, they're public meetings. So if there is a conflict, people would see it.
If it comes up and there is a conflict, we ask you to recuse yourself.
I would, yep.
Okay with that.
So I, otherwise, are you happy with all Jane's committees?
No.
You want the budget committee, I hope.
Yeah, I will actually take that.
Go ahead.
I will take the budget committee, but I, I would like aquaculture and harbor and waterfront.
Yeah, you can have those.
Right.
I want to keep marine resources.
That's fine.
I've had, it was a baby.
Yeah, that's fine. I know, that's the area I'm probably least educated on, so you can have that one.
So which ones have Jane's?
Yeah, I'm getting, trying to update my spreadsheet here as we go.
So you got budget.
Chipman is cable.
Recreation.
Budget. Somebody's going to take something from me.
I'll take recreation.
Well, I've taken cable.
Yeah, you took cable.
So.
I don't mind taking town lands, and what's the other one?
No, conservation. And well, I'm not sure you have to go to every one of the meetings, the conservation and or.
Yeah, the only one that makes me nervous about conservation, they meet twice a month.
Yeah.
That's hard if I'm working to get to their meetings.
Right, it's in the afternoon, yeah.
Yep, all right. Shoot me, but I'll take conservation.
Okay.
Marian smiling.
Did you want me to take recreation if you're going to take conservation? I don't mind doing that. What time does recreation meet?
7:00 PM.
That's perfect, I'll take recreation.
That's my bedtime.
So Kevin still has marine resources.
Yep.
Comp plan.
Fire and rescue.
Fire and rescue.
Comp plan. How are we going to do that?
Yeah, how's that work?
Well, you know, I think we can, I think we can both do it.
That's fine with me as long as that's not a.
Do you both want to be voting members? I mean, this board can decide.
Neither one of us get a vote.
That's fine with me.
And it's an advertised meeting, so I mean, you, you can both be there.
I thought it was, Kevin, Kevin, select, select board member chair.
Johnson.
Yes, Kevin.
Was a voting member of the comp plan.
I think you have been a voting member of the comp plan.
But you're suggesting changing the.
You're changing the.
We'd have to both come off as voting members because if only one of us came off, there'd be an even number then. So if we both came off, at least it'd leave it at the odd number as voting members.
Or would you prefer that Matt become the voting select board member on the comp plan?
I can do that.
And you step away? Because I don't think you need to necessarily, but, but this board can decide to put two select board members on the comp plan if you want.
I can take it over if you don't want to.
Yep.
I'm fine with that.
Unless you.
Because they meet later in the day too, so that's an easy meeting for me to make.
All right, I'll keep doing my thing behind the scenes.
So, so were you going to step down then from?
I'll step down from comp.
From comp plan, okay.
Can, can I run this list by everyone, just to make sure that?
Yes, please do.
I'm on the same page. So for, for David, I have ban stand, energy and technology, Mitchell Field, recycling and cable.
Yep.
For me, I have budget, recreation, town lands, aquaculture, comp plan and harbor and waterfront. And then for Kevin, you're making out. Conservation, resilience and sustainability, or no, hang on, we haven't figured those ones out yet.
No, we haven't.
I'll be the select board liaison.
Well, conservation and resilience and sustainability kind of go hand in hand.
It's the same people.
Yep.
Is it Marian?
You were going to take those?
Yes. I mean, yes.
And who's taking town lands?
I have town lands.
Okay, okay, got it.
And now we're down to housing is hanging out there.
I'll stay with housing.
Okay, so.
So harbor, fire and rescue.
Three, four, five, six.
Which is also emergency, emergency vehicle equipment.
And you're stepping down from aquaculture and that's going to be.
Yep.
So it looks like I have five, Matt has five, and you have six. Does this sound right?
Matt has six.
I have six.
Matt has six?
Yep.
Wait a minute.
I got the most?
Budget.
Right.
Recreation, town lands. Okay, you have six, yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Anybody sort of happy?
Can you guys maybe explain to me what my role is as the liaison?
Well, you're a non-voting member and you are the, the interface between the town and the committee, so if they have any questions.
I'm there to answer questions and stuff.
Yeah, if they wanted to bring, if they want to bring something to the board, you do that for them.
Okay.
You know, you're the interface.
But you can always check on the agenda, see if there's anything that you need to be there, you know.
Yeah.
I was doing that for harbor and waterfront.
Yeah.
I didn't need to be there, I didn't see any reason to go.
And they can, if I don't happen to make a meeting, the committee, and they needed something from me, it's okay for the committee to reach out to me, isn't it?
Yeah, Paul will get hold of you, you know, for harbor and waterfront.
Yeah, all right.
Or aquaculture. And also, you get something going on, check with Paul, see what the agenda is and, you know.
And then also, you can bring something from the committee to the select board if it needs to be acted upon.
All right, perfect. I understand that, and thank you for the description, I was trying to understand my role there.
And it's not a town committee, but I'm liaison to Ha.
Right.
So that gives me six too.
Oh, you just wanted to be part of the six club.
Yeah, and, and we do need people for the Board of Appeals and Planning Board. Any volunteers out there?
Volunteers, yeah. Planning Board, yes, you have a vacancy now, don't you?
That was the one I liked the most, oldest lady.
I liked the planning board.
I enjoyed, I enjoyed the sidewalks.
You're going to like this a lot.
It was, sidewalks was the best part of it. I got to see parts of Harpswell that I never even knew existed.
You still know.
That's true.
No, you get invited anytime to the sidewalk, it's like, there'd be a thing in your box.
All right. I guess I'll see you at sidewalks, Davey, still.
Did you get all that?
I think we did, yeah.
Good for you. You remind me tomorrow.
I think I got it.
What have I done? All right.
Moving back to where we were.
Oh, we good with this?
Yep.
Yep, all right. Request for proposals for, already, tax anticipation note financing.
Tan time again.
Like 10 minutes ago, we did this.
So this is an annual event since Harpswell's fiscal year is January 1 through December 31, and we don't do the commitment until August, and tax payments start rolling in in August and September. And we do pay SAD 75, $864,000 a month, and our other bills, we run out of money. And so we do have to do a tax anticipation note financing. And we also have more money in reserves this year and have several articles proposed to use unassigned fund balance. Last year's borrowing was $3,950,000, hoping to see that interest go down a little bit, but we were able to manage that and came in well under budget. This year's request is for, up to $4.2 million for the short, short-term borrowing, to send out requests for proposals. It would be back before the select board with the responses and with a recommendation at that time.
Well, it's got to be done, so I move we go out to bed.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Public comment. Dana's? No?
We can come up with something.
Oh, you just came for the entertainment.
It is? Boy, I didn't think that was going to.
I have to go to Durham tomorrow, I'm not looking forward to it.
Make sure you sit on a pillow.
There are some, there are some wicked potholes. Amy Hybel, I want to thank Terry and Christie for running while cutting with scissors with this town meeting. You guys, you gals really did a great job. You guys, you gals really did a great job. Yeah, the rug pulled out from under you with, in a good way. But you did really, really well, and I want to thank you for that. I also want to congratulate Matt for being on the select board. I think you will find he does his homework, he's quick on his feet, he's fun to be around. And we're really going to miss him on the planning board. So here's another call for anyone who's listening to join us on the planning board. It's a fun committee. And as Matt said, we get to know the town really well.
They could use a fisherman.
Yes, we really need a fisherman. It, it was so instrumental and so helpful for us to have somebody from the fishing community. Lots of things we do are shorefront reviews. And Matt was just really able to tell us, well, I know there's fishing there, especially on some of the dock applications, where they just sort of off the cuff say, oh, no eelgrass here, no fishing here. Matt was really able to give us a much deeper sense of information about stuff that we just didn't know. So having a fishing person on the, on the planning board is very helpful. And we will do everything we can to make it easy for fishermen to join. We'll, we'll work around your schedule and help you out. Just want to make a note, there are two grant applications on this agenda. And we were told at the, we've been told that if the town doesn't have an up-to-date comprehensive plan, we won't be able to get grants. And I just wanted to make a note of that fact that we have two grant applications here in front of us tonight. And we still don't have an up-to-dated comp plan. The other thing I want to say is, Christie, you did a fantastic job with Mr. Gaudreau on the Mitchell Field issue. And they should have been made aware that this item was going to be on the agenda. Needless to say, they couldn't because you didn't know. And so, but you did a really good job of making that really apparent and clarifying the issues. And I appreciate that. Last thing is, I am still the current vice chair of the Comprehensive Plan Committee. And I am an opponent of passing the plan as it stands now. And Kevin, I know that you didn't do this on purpose, but you said you spoke to the leaders of the opposition. And as the vice chair and an opposing person, I am a leader of the opposition. And so if you have further conversations, I'm just saying, I, I would love to be included in those.
This particular group, your name did not come up.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
No.
That's fine. But I'm, I'm telling you, I would, I would love to be included in it if that's possible.
We're in the committee together, so I probably would not have that conversation with you.
Well, all right, we'll have it, we'll discuss it again. But I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you very much.
All righty, we good with that? Now, more important stuff here. Poll location request, Dennis Obers.
So CMP is placing that new poll. The road commissioner has looked at it and doesn't have an issue with it, which is what your normal procedure is. But it does require signature by municipal officers, so we do need to bring that to the select board.
I move we approve it.
I second it.
And, and any comments? No? All right, all in favor? Anything else?
No, but could you wait a few minutes so we can go get some.
Don't run off.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They can adjourn, right?
Yeah, I guess, or.
What?
I just need you to, I think they should sign it in open session. Let me just, oh, okay.
Oh.
Or you could take a five-minute reset.
Yes.
And I'll go get that.
Yeah.